Good morning Professor Garlic.
How wonderful it is to see you again Lenora dear.
Oh here, you'll need these for today's class.
Um...
A little treat for your auntie.
Ah, hello. Class, please welcome the newest rose in our garden. We do look forward to growing together. How thrilling it is to have everyone back together again. This year will be filled with enchantment and excitement, but the most important thing cultivated in herbology is knowledge. The prudent herbologist is no more afraid of the venomous tentacular than the bouncing bulb. Now then, today we will be acquainting ourselves with the mellifluous tuber known as the mandrake root. Akio. Let's see if we can't make our fibrous friends a bit more comfortable, shall we? First, let's protect our ears. Now, everyone, grip their mandrake by the tendrils and give it a firm tug. Quickly, place your mandrake in the new pot and cut out the soil! The soil should envelop the root like a warm dirty blanket, putting the mandrake right at ease. Repair! I'm very sorry about that, yours was a bit mature I'm afraid. Alright then, off you go. Splendid work everyone! Now for our next task, we'll be planting ditney at our potting tables. You can all get started.
Hmm, I wonder if hippogriffs like not grass.
Yes Professor?
Firstly, well done with your mandrake, they can be rather difficult to get a grasp of.
Actually I enjoyed it, I couldn't help but catch your enthusiasm.
How kind of you. It seems you're already taking to herbology like a mandrake to fresh soil. Now as I mentioned, next we'll be planting ditney. Let us find you some seeds.
I already have some Professor, pick them up in Hog's Mead.
You've visited the magic neap, wonderful! A prepared student is bound to bloom. I've arranged for you to have your own potting table here in the classroom. Wasn't easy to spare one on such late notice. Plant the seeds there now, and you can return to harvest them later. Even with soil, sunlight, and a bit of magic, they will take time to grow. Let's see how to balance my star thistle arrangement. Nifflers fancy- Ditney's restorative properties make it a vital ingredient in the Wigan Weld potion, as you all should know from Professor Sharp's class. Well done! Once it can be harvested, your ditney will be ready to use in Wigan Weld potion. I'll let Professor Sharp don't know about that. Now, what say we branch out? Introduce you to a different sort of flora, the Chinese chomping cabbage. You'll find that some plants are better suited to uses outside of a cauldron. The cabbages do get testy without something to chew. Fortunately, I have a dummy for them to gnaw on. Beer dear, and let them have a good chomping!
Yes Professor.
They're in the other greenhouse, it's just at the end of the footbridge leading out of this room. Your classmate Mr Pruitt has kindly offered to accompany you. Come back and see me when you're finished, oh and mind your fingers, they do bite.
The best time to plant a seed is last season, the second best time is now!
Nice work in defence against the dark arts by the way.
Excuse me?
Your duel with Sebastian, and he's good. Thinks he's really good, but you outright slaughtered him, it was brilliant.
Oh, well, thank you.
I nearly put Sebastian in his place myself. I mean, I would have, if Hecate hadn't stopped me.
Didn't she stop that dragon skull from crushing you?
Typical Slytherin trick, dropping a dragon skull on someone during a fight. We Gryffindors fight with honour. And, uh, Ravenclaw too, at least you did.
Revelio!
Here we are, home of the Chinese chomping cabbage. Go on, grab a few of those cabbages. Now, see that dummy? Just toss the cabbages at it, and belch the rest. Look at that! They'll chomp on anything they can get their mouths on! Mum planted some in her garden last year to keep the gnomes out. Did save her the de-gnoming, but they left her honking daffodils in tatters. Vicious little bastards aren't they? My kind of plants, not like stupid booba tubers and bouncing bulbs. The kind of plants that'd have your back in a fight. Not saying you can't go it alone, but, well imagine if that wasn't a dummy?
I suppose they could prove useful outside of the greenhouse. Nothing wrong with a bit of backup, even if it is from a cabbage.
It's chaos out there, trolls in Hog's Mead and such. You can't be above throwing a cruciferous vegetable if necessary. Dogweed and Deathcap has more of them, if you're keen. Other plants too, ones your parents wouldn't plant in the garden. You get the idea, anyway we probably ought to head back to class. Take your time, I'll see you back in class.
Revelio! Revelio!
That helpful reminder as to why we should always wear our dragon hide gloves. I shall end our lesson here, terribly sorry Mr Clopton.
I tended the Chinese chomping cabbages Professor.
Remarkable plants aren't they? I hope they weren't too much trouble. Don't see any bite marks or missing digits. And good, as you do seem to be quite green fingered. I'm eager to see your skill in the soil continue to blossom.
Magical plants have so much to offer, I'm eager to learn more.
I'm glad, herbology is a bounteous subject. Tend to your garden, and it will tend to you. Well I suppose that's everything. Do come by for a chat sometime, I so enjoy checking in with my new students.
Those mandrakes are really relishing their new pots. Only cost me my damned hearing.
I can't even toss the loom on them.
Revelio!
Shouldn't there be Aurors or someone from the Ministry guarding the school after the incident in Hog's Mead?
Professor Black would never allow that, it would make him look completely incompetent.
Revelio!
Potions is one of the most challenging and hazardous subjects taught at this school. As fifth years, you will be required to reach new heights of both discipline and intellect. You will begin this term by brewing a Wigan Weld potion. Mr Takkar, can you tell us why this particular potion might come in handy?
Yes Professor Sharp, the Wigan Weld potion can be used to sterilize and even heal a variety of injuries.
It can heal some injuries, but not all. Point for Ravenclaw. Before today's class is completed, each of you will have brewed a Wigan Weld potion of your own. You never know when you might need it. Please begin. Use a strong, even motion when crushing your ingredients. Please be meticulous when adding powder to your potions. One errant sneeze could be disastrous. I see most of you have not forgotten how to stir. Not an easy potion to brew. Well done, and from what I hear of your recent exploits in Hog's Mead, you'd also do well to practice brewing the defensive edurus potion. Professor Weasley had you acquire the recipe from Jay Pippins correct?
Yes sir.
Good, for the moment you can find the ingredients you need in my office. But in the future you'll be expected to provide your own ingredients. Some can be harvested from the plants you grow in your herbology class, and rarer ones can be purchased. Others however, may be harder to obtain, and will require you to be a bit more... resourceful. Come and see me when you've finished brewing, and we'll see if it was skill or luck the first time around.
Professor Sharp said that-
My parents considered keeping me home from school this year after the rumours of a Goblin Rebellion.
Did I hear Professor Sharp say that you have permission to go into his office?
He did say that, he wants me to get more ingredients to brew another potion.
Brilliant! You my friend have been presented with an extraordinary opportunity. I'm Gareth by the way, Gareth Weasley, bit of a prodigy with potions if I do say so myself.
Pleasure to meet you. Wait, are you related to Professor Weasley?
She's my aunt, keeps too close an eye on me for comfort. But she can't be everywhere. Listen, anyone with a troll sized brain can brew an edurus potion. I'm working on something that's certain to be spectacular. I'm just missing one tiny last ingredient that will add that extra spark.
I suspect that's where I come in.
You're as clever as I'd hoped. I simply need a single Fwuppa feather, as you'll already be in Sharp's office with his permission. Perhaps you could grab it for me?
I'll get you the Fwuppa feather, as long as you're certain Sharp won't miss it.
I assure you he won't, Fwuppa feathers aren't that valuable. Wait until you see what I'm brewing, hurry back to me when you have the feather.
Revelio!
Witch or wizard always has a few potions on hand.
Professor Sharp must have learned a lot during his time as an Auror. I wish he talked about it more.
Here's the Fwuppa feather you wanted.
Brilliant, thank you! This is going to take a moment to brew, you should get back to brewing your edurus potion, and I'll tell you when this concoction's finished.
Should you trot the ditney or crush it? The wrong answer could result in an unfortunate loss of your eyebrows.
And now we add the mallow sweet, and... that's odd, what's happening? Wait, it's not supposed to!
Garrett!
Dragon time, what happened?
Well done Gareth.
What now Mr Weasley?
Sorry Professor.
That'll be point from Gryffindor, again? Mr Weasley did not do this on his own, his accomplice will answer to me as well.
I was impressed that you were able to answer Professor Sharp's question about the Wigan Weld potion.
Oh thank you, that means a lot coming from me fellow Ravenclaw. And I've never seen anyone brew such a flawless Wigan Weld potion on their first try, well done.
I'm glad I was able to get it right the first time.
You must simply have a knack for potion making. Some students seem so confounded by potion recipes, it's as if they're written in gobbledegook. A fascinating language by the way, neither here nor there really but, I am a self-taught speaker. Merlin's beard, good conversation is the enemy of free time! I must return my book Gateway to the Far Stars before my next class. Speaking of stars, we'll be in astronomy together, you'll love it. Professor Sharp is firm but quite clever, see you soon no doubt.
I brewed an edurus potion as you asked Professor.
I'm surprised you had the time, you seemed rather busy helping Mr Weasley brew chaos.
I'm not sure what you're talking about Professor.
You will not earn favour with me by failing to take responsibility for your actions. I suggest you heed my warning. As for the work you did today at your own cauldron, I will say, you've done well. I confess I was sceptical given the advanced nature of this class and the fact you're a new student.
I'm glad I was able to meet your expectations.
A rare occurrence, and you do well to remember that you're not a potions master quite yet. In addition to having a solid grasp of how to combine various ingredients, you should gain an understanding of the ingredients themselves. Pay particular attention in herbology, the plants you nurture there are often essential to the potions you brew here. Now I recommend that you find a safe location in which to practice brewing. You cannot leave a hot cauldron simply anywhere, that'll be all. I think each of us has had enough excitement for one day, class is dismissed.
That was an interesting class.
Thanks to you, wasn't precisely what I had in mind, but it was still brilliant. I appreciate your help, I hope Sharp wasn't too disagreeable when you handed in your potion. Heard him talking about taking responsibility.
Professor Sharp was annoyed but we sorted it out, no harm.
Cheers to that, he probably had a good chuckle after we left. Sharp may seem gruff, but I'd bet a few galleons he blew up a potion or two in his day. Best be off, next time we talk I promise, fewer explosions.
Revelio! Yes! Revelio!
How nice to see you my young friend.
Revelio!
I was wondering when I'd see you again. Let's look at what we have shall we? A pleasure doing business with you. Let me know if there's anything else I can do to help.
Could you remind me how the D'dalian keys work again?
When you spot or hear a flying key, you're to follow it back to its cabinet. Inserting it in the lock is the tricky part, I hope you follow some. If you open a cabinet I'd love to know what you find, if anything.
Hello Lucan, is the final round of Cross Ones ready?
Big match today. It all comes down to this, the moment that we find out if your training and dedication is enough to win it all. Ready for a shot at glory?
I certainly am.
Brilliant, are you dueling with a partner?
Yes, natty.
Then let's get started.
We can make this a real victory.
That's the spirit! Expelliarmus, don't go away now! Laviosi! Confringe, the fifth, I'm the one!
Level up! Come on!
Laviosi!
Incendio! Level up! Stigman! Incendio!
Act like a winner!
Incendio! Attia!
Laviosi!
Leviosa! Begone, Attia!
Laviosi! Confringe them! Leviosa!
Stupid one! Stupid one! Akia!
Akia!
Incendio! Stupid one!
Erresto, non licit!
Potager! Akia! Leviosa! Incendo! Incendio!
Akia!
Akia! Uh-huh, someday I'll sign up for a round.
What a victory! You've won the tournament!
I'm just pleased to have done as well as I did.
And we're pleased to have such a gracious champion. Now, to the victor goes the prize! And so it is my great honour to present you with this simple yet elegant token of supreme dueling accomplishment!
Thank you. It's been an honour.
You earned it! You are a duelist to be reckoned with. Now that we've definitively crowned the tournament winner, I suppose I should get back to my schoolwork. Wonder how my herbology plants are doing? I haven't tended them in ages.
Yes! Hello, Lucan. I'd like to practise with the training dummy.
Excellent idea! This time will be a bit more of a challenge. Ready?
That'd be brilliant!
Wonderful! I'll set things up. Remember to cast all the spell combinations before the dummy lands again. If you need to stop practising before you finish all of them, let me know.
Akia! Incendio! Leviosa!
Nicely done!
Akia! Incendio!
Good one!
Akia! Akia! Incendio! Leviosa! Akia! Akia! Incendio!
Excellent form! Impressive wandwork. I'd hate to face you in a duel.
Thanks, Lucan. You've been a great help.
I'll stop. Don't make me blush. Seriously, well done. Training dummies will think twice before challenging you again. Even though you won the tournament already, I'm glad to see you haven't stopped training. Stay sharp, my friend.
Revelio.
I hope you were able to take care of everything I had asked, Professor.
I completed all of your most recent assignments.
Well done! Then you're ready to learn Expelliarmus. Pay close attention. The disarming charm may often be all you need to defeat the most powerful dark witches and wizards you might encounter. Spellcasting requires a focused mind and a steady wand. Good work. The dummy is here if you wish to stay and practise. Expelliarmus! You seem to have the right end of the stick. But keep practising. Expelliarmus may save your life one day. Excellent defensive skills.
Professor, do you have a moment?
I do. What is it?
I wondered, did you attend Hogwarts?
I did. I am a proud member of Ravenclaw House, like you. Why do you ask?
I was curious as to how Hogwarts has changed over the years.
I see. Well, the castle itself, as I'm sure you have surmised, is full of surprises. I dare say more than the staircases change around here. As for the students, well, they seem to get more capable every year. Although, we got up to just as much mischief in my day as you seem to now. I used to look the other way at all sorts of roguery when I was head girl. I can tell you, however, that I did once admonish a certain Phineas Nigella's Black for enjoying a sugar quill during a lecture.
I hadn't realised that you and Professor Black were, uh... students here together.
Appearances can be deceiving. You see, I was once wounded by time itself.
Time itself? I never would have imagined such a thing.
Ah, well, it was the risk I took with my prior position. You may or may not have heard that I was an unspeakable at the Ministry for years.
An unspeakable? What does...
As you might suspect, I cannot speak about what we did. Suffice it to say, the job was not without its hazards. Now, I hope I've satisfied your curiosity for the moment.
You have. Thank you for speaking with me, Professor.
Keep up with your wandwork. One must always be prepared for mischief, both inside and outside of the castle. Expelliarmus! Still at it, I see.
I've always said that travel broadens the mind.
I spent the entire game holding my head.
Revelio! Revelio.
A hundred and forty-two staircases, and this is where they put me.